Good evening, everybody. The Executive Session of the Wayne Port of Education Regular Meeting of June 1st, 2023, was convened in the media center of George Washington Middle School, 68 Lennox Road, Wayne, New Jersey. Statement of compliance for the setting forth daytime and location was read in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act. The roll call is taken. Meeting recessed. This is now the reconvene. I ask everyone please to stand.
My pleasure. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. It's great to be back here tonight. You know you're old when you look at the back wall. You remember the principal who was here.
Okay, so time for administrative report. So I'll keep my report brief for this evening because we have much to share about with regard to our district goals and our proposed goals for next year. And we also have a number of committee reports. So noting that our proposed goals are a public work session item, and the board will not be taking any action this evening. The goals are the subject of further discussion. So staff, students, or any members of the county are able to comment using Let's Talk. Go to Let's Talk. You'll find there's a tab for district goals. You should click there if you'd like to provide feedback. We'll get to that in a few minutes. There are some very important staffing recommendations, including on this agenda, including recommendations for principals at Pines Lake Elementary and Packnak Elementary. There's also a recommendation for one of our floating middle school assistant principals. So after a thorough interview process that starts at the building level, and after interviews at the central office, the administration with the support of the interview committee is recommending Dr. Lydia Cooper to work as principal of Pines Lake Elementary. Dr. Cooper is an in-house candidate. She's been working as an assistant principal at the elementary level for the past 10 years. She worked as one of our floating assistant principals and provided oversight to the math and science programs. Dr. Cooper was a major contributor to a number of projects, including the selection process for both our elementary math textbooks and also our new science program. Also, the administration with the support of the interview committee is recommending the appointment of Kenneth Doolittle, to be appointed as principal of Packnak Lake Elementary School. Mr. Doolittle currently serves as the principal of Hatt school school, which is a pre-K eight school in Wanacoo. He's held that position for the past five years. Prior to that, he was a K-12 language arts supervisor in a PACOM for three years. So altogether, Mr. Doolittle has eight years of administrative experience, as well as five years of teaching experience at the elementary and little school level. Mr. Doolittle has a great sense of humor, and he made it very clear that it would be difficult for him to continue his education and earn his doctorate because then it would be doctorate. Which he acknowledged, especially when talking about students, would be difficult to overcome. But a more serious note, during the interview process, it became very clear that one of his strengths was his ability to foster a positive school culture. We're also recommending the appointment of Lisa Kramer as middle school floating assistant principal overseeing math and science in replacement of Nicole Rodriguez, who will be taking over at Scotter Colfax for Mr. Muccia, who's leaving to become a principal. Kramer comes to Wayne after serving as gifted and talented coordinator in Bloomfield. She currently teaches math and computer science for the Quantin Township Schools. She has extensive experience with curriculum writing and is also a teacher professional development leader. So the other order of business that's included on the agenda tonight has to do with the revision of the 2324 calendar, noting the issues that exist for Election Day. Right now, we have a calendar revision where we've proposed that on June 6, 24, 24 Election Day, schools would be closed, for all students and staff, instead of the originally scheduled minimal day. And this is kind of a fall through the situation we have this year. And since schools are now closed on June 6, the 2023-2024 school year calendar now ends on June 19 for students and June 20 for all teachers. So that's the calendar revision. With regard to the HIV report and reporting the following data related to harassment, intimidation, and bullying incidents in the Township School District, there were 12 incidents of HIV investigated since my last report. Four of those cases were deemed to meet the criteria of actual HIV cases. That concludes my report. So we have a goal report. So board members, our goal report is going to come to you in two parts. Can you turn a little bit?
Maybe a little bit more towards the board members so they can see it as well. That's good. Is that good?
All right, everybody here can see this one? Okay. So the first is our end of year report for the goals for this year. And we're going to go through that fairly quickly. The reason why is because we've already provided the board a number of reports about where we are with our goals. So we're going to go through that, and then we're going to spend a little more time on our proposed goals for next year. And they'll be able to time for the board discussion. So this particular goal is a goal expanding and refining special education programs for pre-K 12. So you see that the goal is to conduct a comprehensive needs assessment, which at this point, sure, all of you have read. The goal of aligning our student needs with programs and establishing new programs or re-envisioning some of our existing programs. The goal will progress to sustainability for future elementary and secondary programming. So all of you know that we contracted with Stages Learning, and as I said, all of you have read the report. You've heard about it. You've also attended CPAG meetings where the administration presented the report. The report was also presented here with the help of Stages Learning. And the recommendations resulted in new programmatic paraprofessional positions. So new autism professional development training, handle with care training, program development, increased staffing, which we talked about before, to meet our special education students' and personnel needs. So that's the outcome of the goal. If you can go to the next slide. So since the Office of Student Support Services is still working this year to develop programmatic and paraprofessional criteria, at this point, we've hired a number of new, and we've trained the paraprofessionals that were selected for these positions. It says here that we're going to now use that for self-contained programs across the district to support placement of students with the district's self-contained programming. A paraprofessional criteria rubric is a very important thing. It will help IEP teams make recommendations about the assignment of paraprofessionals. A second goal will be proposed to evaluate our inclusive programs for students in grades one through 12. So we'll hear about that in just a few minutes.
And I'll just highlight that the programmatic paraprofessionals and the training that we provided this year was part of our presentation at the Springs NJ ASA Special Education Conference. And there was a lot of interest from around the state. To get a better understanding, we did some calls about what we did and even requests to send staff to learn from us next year. So it's being looked at as the best path for us, which is really nice. This is the goal for post-secondary planning, and we have provided lots of updates, so I know that you're familiar. But again, just looking at analyzing the strengths and weaknesses of our current curricular offerings. There were things that we got started on right away. That includes the grading system, looking, which we always do, to expand our community partnerships so that we can increase the number of SLA, structured learning experiences for our students, career-based instruction, as we refer to it now, and internship opportunities for any high school students who want to leave mid-day. And this year, we expanded to include pre-professional internships for students who wanted to stay in school but still wanted an internship experience. We were able to partner and identify those experiences for them outside of the regular school day. So again, just to summarize and share, a lot of this has already gone to you. Waiting was added to the enriched classes, and this went into effect in September of the current school year. We have additional elective courses that we'll be offering for the 2324 school year as enriched course options. Dual enrollment classes will now be receiving enriched waiting. We wanted to promote and really encourage more kids to participate. Additional honors classes will be added, and that includes biology, chemistry, and multivariate calculus, which we haven't offered in a long time. And it just shows that our kids are being really aggressive about excelling their math studies. And we're working on enhancing our program of studies for each high school. Again, our high school internship program participation has increased. The daytime internship program had 19 students, and we were able to offer many after-school four-week rotations for kids who were interested. We have some kids who asked if they could extend their learning through the summer. So we're going to work till we said circle back this in July, and we will find some opportunities for you. And we've had students who have worked with Dr. Toback with far. So it's been really nice. We've been able to engage ourselves in these partnerships as well. The community-based instruction continues to thrive, and we have 80 students working at 167 board-approved businesses. So we continue to place students. We expanded our programs for parents and students to prepare them for the college process. There was a lot of conversation about this previously. There hasn't been this year because we've been doing a lot to support them. We have a FASDA completion workshop, free eight-week SAT prep course, and we have a college application boot camp coming. I think that will be a great help. We just offered a parent day to learn about dual enrollment options. We continue to look for ways to put money back in our students' pockets. College representatives were present, and we had 80 parents participate. Now, when we have these trainings, we record them, and we put them on the website. So if you're unable to participate at time, or you need to refer back to it, you have a place to go. We also had added an additional castle at Eastlake High School, and we made a commitment to maintain those to better support our students. This is the goal three, the extended day program analysis. And again, this is a conversation that has been ongoing throughout the year. And in the end, the decision was made to continue to maintain our in-house programs. Parents seem to feel well-supported. We recognized that we needed to add additional staff for safety reasons and to meet the needs of all of our students. So we did add additional site lead positions. The middle school didn't seem to be a priority in terms of interest when we went back out to seek from parents who were really looking for extended day options. The early childhood center is an area where there are some parents who feel like it can help them out very much. We also know that if we extended aftercare, there would probably be a lot more kids who would come from daycare centers and enroll in our pre-K. Right now, because of the renovations going on at the central office, us being relocated there, and the renovations going on at Creepness to open up additional classrooms, we're unable to support these parents. But what I did indicate them is that we're going to aim to offer an extended day option at the early childhood center, hopefully in January. And again, that's conditional upon all of the projects that we have going on now and just being ready and being able to adequately staff.
Great. So for goal four, so during the pandemic, the district was in very good position in that we already had one-to-one technology available. So our students already had devices. And the one thing that was definitely challenged was our software. Software that we had was not really designed for delivering virtual instruction. Google Classroom was something that was relatively new to many of the staff members, and they certainly weren't used to using it for day-to-day instruction. And so we used the Google tools as best we could. We worked through some of those issues. But what did become apparent is that, you know what? If we had a learning management system, there's a lot of benefits. And there's a lot of benefits during a pandemic. But there's even more benefits when you're not during a pandemic. In other words, when you're working with students, when you're delivering content, when you're talking about, you know, ultimately creating engaging lessons that really are easily accessible to students, when you're talking about situations where students are absent from school, where they always have access to their work, there's just a whole host of benefits that exist for learning management systems, and it helps teachers deliver better content. So what we looked to do was enhance our software offerings for our staff by coming up with a learning management system that would be something that we agreed on, in other words, mutually agreed upon package. And so we went through a process this year. A final selection will be made by the end of the school year with an implementation plan for 2023-2024. So most likely not immediately, starting with the high schools. So we'll talk about that goal because we want to continue this because that is a significant goal, a significant change in terms of how the teachers really play the lessons and how they do the lessons. So it's going to take time to get used to. But is there another page? Okay, so that's it. That was easy.
All right. Goal five was the multi-tiered system of support. And this is something that we were tasked with doing as a result of the pandemic and knowing that there was a lot of learning lost. We contracted with a company to bring in outside coaches and people who have expertise in this area. And this year, we prioritize grades one, grade for literacy, and grade six for Algebra I teachers. And one is the classroom. Just so that you all understand, tier one instruction is standard-driven instruction that focuses on broad skills and a generalized learning target. So those are aligned with the New Jersey Student Learning Standards, what everybody is expected to know and be able to do at each grade level. Tier two intervention targets a specific skill deficit. Essentially, what we're doing is we're teaching instructors, our classroom teachers, how to identify each day students who may not be grasping all the skills and showing them how to provide small group targeted intervention to meet whatever their needs are in real time. And building a culture so that every teacher is feeling responsible to meet every child's needs every day because you don't want them to fall further behind. Next year, we're going to continue with this goal, and we will focus on grades two. This year was one in grades, so we'll focus on grades two, and then we'll continue at the middle school level. So each year, the goal is to just build capacity with all your instructional staff and have coaches going through and make sure that they're all familiar and comfortable with the format for remediating, recognizing deficiencies, and assessing any loss in student growth. So that concludes the goal update for the end of year goals for this year. Does anyone have any questions?
With the aftercare situation, what happened with the middle schools?
There didn't seem to be tremendous interest when we initially asked. There were a number of parents who submitted just an interest based on a survey. We were initially working with the YMCA and Rite of School because we knew that we did not have staff in place to put our program in ourselves. It's a time-consuming process. They have to come in, they have to assess the space, they have to guarantee them a number of kids. And in the end, there was some change in staff over at the YMCA. The program director ended up resigning, and now there's a new director who actually just reached out to me. We reached out to another company. We had them come in and then just gathered all the information that we had. It was determined that we do a really good job with the program ourselves. We have staff members who have been in these jobs, who also work as paraprofessionals. We've reached together a number of jobs. These are people who, many of them who live in the community, have been with us for a long time. It was really important for us to support them and listen to what they had to say about how we can boost the programs. We increased pay, we brought in additional staff, and we dedicated a lot of time. We seem to lose traction over time with middle school. I think people have concerns at sixth grade when they're making the jump from fifth to sixth initially. But as the year started, they made other arrangements, and there was the interest shot down.
A while ago, we attempted a middle school aftercare program, and it fizzled. So that was my question. Was there a lack of interest once again? Because, you know, most of them are at that age where they're going to clubs, et cetera, and they don't really need the aftercare.
There are a lot of after-school alternative activities. To be partnered with the PTO.
So it's off the table again?
Yes.
Okay, that's what I wanted to end. The second question, this management system, the learning management system. If we decide to go with one, are we going to pilot it or go district-wide?
So we've been running pilots this year.
You've already started that?
Started, but with a choice of different systems. So basically, we have three different candidates. So we've run small-scale pilots. And so at this point, we're down to really one choice.
But when you do decide, are you still going to do district-wide pilot?
So there will be a transition. And the first part of it would be, we'll talk about that in the goal. There's a transition plan in our goal.
For next year?
For next year. So there's an implementation plan. So the transition or implementation plan would be something that gets covered in the goal. All right, so our 2324 district goals. I am very excited about these goals because it really puts together a variety of very positive things for the district. And then at the very end, we also have a number of ongoing projects, other important things that we're doing here in the district that will make our schools better places, right? Better places for a lot of different reasons, better places to learn, better places to go to school, improved environment, all those sorts of things. So I'm very excited about these goals. And I think that the first goal is one of the most significant projects that the board has ever taken on, this or any board, I mean, which is schools for the class of 2038. So what do I mean by that? Our current preschools graduate from the Wayne Township Schools. That will be 2038, all right? It's hard to think about. And I'm quite sure, when you think about it that way, you can also think about the rate of change that happens now and how quickly things change, whether it's the economy or with technology. The fact is that the world will move along at a much faster pace, much faster than we have today. It'll be a different place. So I have some information there about what are the types of things that happen. Nine billion living on the planet. All these technologies that are in development today will probably be in everyday use. And because of globalization, our students will certainly be part of a global talent pool or a variety of different jobs because there's so much work that's available remotely. But our schools are 60 years old. And if you come into the library and you look around, if you attended school here 20 years ago, 30 years, 40 years ago, or you go to different classrooms, you probably would be very familiar with the way things look. So not that that's anything, that there's anything wrong with that. We're in the same situation lots of other schools are. And we also have a very good and a very well-funded facility maintenance program. So it's not that we have a bad situation in our schools because of the lack of maintenance or a lack of effort on the part of the board to make sure we maintain the investment the community has in all of our facilities. But we do have immediate needs that are beyond what we are able to do with our regular budget. We also have some things we need concerned about with enrollment, right? We know our enrollment situation is a lot different than what the Demographer study showed when we first started evaluating what our enrollment would look like post-pandemic. We also know we have a lot of construction that's going to be happening over the next few years. How many units are involved for, you know, in the final version? You know, it's thousands, right? It's a 2,000, 3,000, that's where the, it's lots of units, lots of construction. A lot of that is unclear yet, other than we know that construction is definitely coming our way. So it's always better to be proactive as opposed to reactive. So we also have a unique circumstance where you have long-term debt. So the Anthony Wayne Middle School debt after 20 years, that debt, our final payment, is included in this year's budget. That will go away. And now you have this unique moment in time where we can go ahead with these projects, and we can go ahead with a significant amount of work in the neighborhood of $50 million, but that would have no impact on taxpayers. In other words, taxes would stay about the same because of this unique situation. So that's another important factor. Another important factor is we are competing against other schools. So say a technical institute continues to expand, continues to build new buildings, continues to make efforts to market their programs to our students here. So facilities do matter to parents, especially when you have options, if you have choices. If you have a brand-new facility that your child can go to school in, and it's absolutely beautiful and state-of-the-art everything, or you have a building that was built in the 60s, well, that's going to be a tough choice. So the goal, now that we've completed most of the preliminary work needed for a referendum, it's time to develop a comprehensive and detailed plan to be used as a basis for supporting activities intended to build community understanding and supported this referendum. So in other words, the why behind the project. That's really what we want to do, was start talking about the why behind the project. So if we go to the next slide? Do you have the, okay, good. Okay. So at this point, there are architectural plans. So the board directed Mr. Moffett to go ahead with all of the different plans that we need. So $178 million worth of possible projects. That does not mean that the referendum adds up to $178 million. It means that if the board went ahead with every single project that we could possibly think of, that would be $178 million. So that is not, that's not a headline. That's not, that's not what the board is doing. What that is, is basically specific information about what we submitted. We submitted for plans, of which the board will now have a critical role in determining what are we going to move ahead with. We need to know preliminary eligible costs. So in other words, what is it that we expect a project to cost? What do we expect to receive in terms of state aid? What other types of revenue that we could bring in that might be able to support some of these projects are all things that would have to be considered, with the board always looking at, well, if you get other people to pay for the project, that's a project that probably is a good one to go ahead with, right? And then if there's other ways to offset the costs, you know, you work your way down to projects that fall directly on the taxpayer's shoulders. So right now, there is a favorable set of circumstances where the state does provide aid for a large number of projects, although some of the projects that we submit may not receive funding. We don't really know about all the ins and outs of that. But once we do, we really need to act because now it's time to get moving with a lot of that. Okay, so then with a greater understanding of plans, option, cost, and funding, the Board on Education and the Citizen Advisory Committee that is being formed will need to identify the priority projects so we can move ahead once we have the final list of projects. Then we put together the information for the referendum, including the impact on taxpayers. And then what question? What is the exact wording of the question that will appear on the ballot? Will there be multiple questions? What is that going to look like? So those are all significant tasks that have to happen, and they have to happen in probably early fall 2023. And then you get to the community education part, right? Helping people understand what it is that, what is the work that the board is seeking to do? How will that benefit students? How will that make education better in this school district? How will that help us in the future? What kind of work is being done to maintain our facilities? In other words, we want to keep our buildings watertight, right? So there's roofwork that has to be done, all these other projects. They're all a very important part of the big picture. And then we carry out the community education and involvement plan, leading up to the referendum, which is currently scheduled for March 12 of 2024. So that is our, that is our goal. The other thing I thought that would be helpful is for the board to understand what impact facilities has on our rankings. So right in Wayne and lots of communities, people are very interested, well, how are the schools ranked? Where do the schools appear? What are the kinds of things that we should know about in the schools? And what are the differences from one community to the next? So if there's a young family who is thinking about moving to Wayne, or maybe moving to Quantin, or maybe moving to Quatville, one thing that definitely affects our ratings, you can see here, is resources and facilities. Now, the resources part, I think we're fine. I think that ultimately, the board adequately funds our programs. That's not really the issue. The facilities, they are the issue. So that's our weak point. And so that's something that's worthwhile considering as well. If we want to keep our rankings high, which we do, with the rankings, if we want to keep them there or move them ahead, that's one area where we would need to make improvements. So if we go to the next goal? So the learning management system. So basically, what we're talking about here is moving ahead with a new learning management system. We talked about this a little bit before in our prior presentation. And then if you go to the next page, here's basically the software package recommended implementation plans. In other words, we're going to do what is recommended by the software package that we're leading towards using. So the last goal, I'm sorry, my last goal before I get to the jump, said, is youth mental health support. So I included some alarming statistics. A recent study by the National Council for Mental Well-being reported that one in five teens in the United States will experience a mental health challenge by the time they reach the age of 18. In the Wayne Township Schools, mental health concerns continue to be on the rise. As statewide leaders in recognizing youth mental health issues, the Wayne Township Schools created unique supports for students and families where mental health services are delivered directly to students during school and after hours. So, but there's still, there's still more that we need to do. And the more that we need to do is to continue to educate staff and students about mental health challenges and provide strategies to help our students and our staff assist students who may be in crisis. So that's a big part of the goal. That's the narrative rationale. Everyone can read that, right? There's a variety of alarming statistics about mental health. Post-pandemic, prior to the pandemic, there were a lot of alarming statistics about mental health. Post-pandemic, there are even more. So I think that is something that, as I said, is... So I think that is something that, as I said, it's on everybody's mind. It's on the minds of parents, it's on the minds of board members. These mental health issues are not likely to go away anytime soon. And so the goal is to continue to find ways to provide counseling, additional counselors, additional services, and also training to ensure student wellness and we support, we continue to support our student wellness goals, recognizing the loss of federal COVID relief funds. In other words, although we hope to pay for a lot of the services that we'll be able to deliver next year with federal funds, we don't know exactly what percentage of those services we'll be able to cover with federal funds. And we also don't know in the future, after this year, what is it that we'll be able to do? So we really have to continue maintaining this effort, but we also have to make sure, obviously, that we have the funding to continue to provide these services, because they have been very important. The mental health services that we provide across the district right now are currently fully booked. There's 120 students that are currently receiving these services on a weekly basis, and plus there are additional students that receive these services at home. So it really is a very important thing. It's a service that is used 100% of the time. Go to the next. Okay. So the big part is the services I was talking about are delivered by tri-county health, and that allows them to receive these services during the school day and to an extent after hours. The district will commit to offering youth mental health first aid training for 150 staff and students. So that's a very important thing. So we have a grant for that. And the township, the Department of Health is also doing a similar thing, a teen mental health program where people are going to learn a little bit more about how to recognize students that might be struggling, students that may have mental health issues, cases of depression, anxiety, and how to help students in that situation is a very important thing. So we can also partner with them. If we need training beyond 150, we have the funding for it. Then we have some other things. Training students about the negative impact of social media. So that is obviously a big issue. It's a big issue here. It's a big issue everywhere. What impact is social media having on students? The Surge in General just recently weighed in on that topic and said that parents should be aware that social media may be having more of an effect on your child than you think. That was the main message. Okay? We still have wellness weekends with an emphasis on digital minimalism, so reducing screen time, and providing juniors at both high schools training in teen mental health first aid. Okay? So that's really an initiative that was pioneered by Mr. Wisniewski. It's something that worked very well, and that's something that we're gonna continue to do at both high schools. So it's a very, very nice thing that we offer for our students. Okay? So that's goal three. And then Donna is gonna finish with goal four and five.
I'd love to recognize at this point that there was a theme and a continuation from the goals from this year and leading into the goals to next year. And again, all of these are reinforcing all of the information that we have been able to gather, coming back from the pandemic, having a learning management system. We were so fortunate that we were a one-to-one district. We had the devices, but we had to quickly transition to Google Classroom. And then we saw the benefits of having all of these places, all of the materials, recordings, places for teachers to post messages, generate dialogues, and how it helps students. And just seeing so many students who have been in and out of school because of mental health issues, it's really important to have the most sophisticated system in place. And a slow rollout gives us an opportunity to start with high school, work our way down. Mental health continues to be on our minds. We know that those COVID funds expire at some point, but we need to make our students who come to counselors and say, I have a friend who shared this. I witnessed this. They need to have an understanding and awareness of what their role in all this is and who to speak to, how they can respond to their peers, how they can be a support system. And if they're themselves feeling lonely, isolated, or just like they need to talk to somebody, being able to go to a peer who has that training is really something that will benefit us in so many ways. And we're just starting next year and hope to continue and keep expanding. It's a small commitment that will go a very large way. Special education and MTSS, we combined this for next year. We had expressed to you and the community our interest in really taking a deep dive into all the special education programs. This year, we focused on self-contained, but we said that we would continue this work. We had great success working with Stages Learning. We had great success with the professional development that we onboarded this year and want to maintain this commitment to our students and our staff. Now we are looking at our, each classroom where students are going, have ICR, in-class replacement or out-of-class replacement, and even our general in-classness, where maybe students have not been identified for programs yet or are just experiencing some learning loss at any given time because they're having trouble grasping material. It could be related to the learning, maybe in math, you do really well with fractions, but you don't do well with geometry. It could be related to trauma in the household that just impacted how you were feeling that day. So next year, we'll continue this work. We'll continue to look for ways to train and support teachers, to identify students who need additional support. We will also develop, and this is something that we're starting right now because we wanna have it in place for the fall, identification criteria for placement in any of these programs. This way, as child study teams sit down and have these conversations, as our INRS teams sit down and have these dialogues, they can look at certain criteria. We wanna make sure that you're placing kids in the right programs. We also wanna make sure that if we don't have the program, we're not placing them in the program we have. We're developing programs. And we want to be really progressive about thinking and training teachers so that we can keep as many kids in district as possible and return kids from out of district to our schools. So again, just maintaining our commitment to building and developing our programs. Once our consultants come back in, we'll be working on visiting the inclusive programs. They'll make observations and recommendations. They'll meet with building administration, identify areas where we can make improvements, and we plan on doing all this work next year, just how we address it in real time this year. And goal five is profile of a graduate. I went out just a couple of months ago with our high school administrators and some of our directors to see a program on this. We had learned a little bit about this from District Communications. They're the public relations firm that we have contracted with for the referendum work. They worked with the Ramsey School District to develop a profile of a graduate. Bronx Berry is another school. They have Portrait of a Graduate, districts who participate in this work. You kind of frame it out for how you want to meet your own needs. But the goal is to develop a profile for students at different times during their K-12 education. For us, based on the conversations we had, we felt like we would love to develop a profile of a graduate who was leaving fifth grade, profile of a graduate who's leaving eighth grade, and a profile of a graduate who's leaving high school. It's really a way to, as a district, come together, work with community stakeholders, staff members, anyone who wants to be involved in this committee work, and identify core competencies, characteristics, academic areas where you want students to be their best selves, look at the arts, look at clubs. How do we want to shape our students? And what is the standard that we're really seeking to develop in each student and instill in each student when they graduate our elementary schools or middle and high school? It creates a common language for the district, and it's also a great way to market yourselves as a school district rather than individual schools. Ultimately, the goal is to work together and develop an infographic for the district that you have with you wherever you go at different events. So people can say, this is who we are. This is what we represent. And anytime you have a school event, your administrators, your principals, your teachers can always go back to students and say, this is who we are. You're setting an expectation. You're setting a standard of excellence. And it's based on the input and ideas of all the stakeholders who are involved. We were really excited when we went out. There were, you know, so many behavioral challenges that we were navigating this year, and a lot of it resulted from kids not being in school consistently, second graders coming in for the first time, trauma in the household. And this would be a first step in us setting a common language for each building and really going back to kids to say, this is what we expect from each of you to bring your personal best every day. We would start it out by giving an introduction. We were going to kick it off at our administrative retreat this summer. We would look at, you know, different progressive districts have already done this work. Our communication firm would come in and they would be able to share examples. This is what we saw when we went out for training. And just look at what they identified as core competencies and key characteristics, what they were hoping to achieve. Then we would form a big committee. We would do a lot of outreach and break into subcommittees for elementary, middle, high school. We'd have some crossover work. And the mission would really be able to set a clear vision for what we would hope each graduate at each level would embody before they leave elementary and go to middle school, middle school and a high school, and what a high school graduate looks like when they leave our schools. And then the next step, which could be year two, would be to develop profile projects. And just that show that students have met the core competencies that we set up as part of our profile and have them do public presentations and showcase at different school events so that they develop public speaking skills. You're working on those soft skills, elocution skills, building confidence. It's just a great way to promote work with kids and get kids out front and center who may not have been comfortable, but they can be working with peers, they can do it in front of small groups. Decisions would be made to help each kid mute that mark. And then ultimately, I already referenced, we would develop a logo that is the work of the entire committee. And we would have something that we would just be able to pull out. Every principal would have it. We'd bring it to every event. We'd have it at our Wayne Day, and that would be the logo that really represents who we are as a district.
Dr. Thomas, can we talk about the additional projects?
So obviously, we have the goals that we are recommending to the board, but we also recognize there's lots of additional work, a lot of additional projects that we'll have during our next year. So even though they are not goals, these are different projects that are significant, that we'll be undertaking with the board, with the staff, with the community. So obviously, one of them is something that people have been talking about for years, which is working to develop a high school pathway, allowing students to earn an associate's degree while in high school. Okay? So that's a goal that is something that is being achieved in some districts, although it's not easy. So we, at this point, started in 2015 with dual-credit courses. And dual-credit courses were almost immediately super popular. They were, they had full enrollment. And since that time, even today, I was talking to two parents who were talking about their children's experience in our high schools and the experience for some of their friends' children. And they were talking about this child who's graduated with 15 college credits, this child graduated with 25 college credits, and this child was able to enter a program and graduate in three years with a master's degree instead of, you know, in the four years of college. There's all sorts of things that are positive for students that get involved in these dual-credit classes. They started simple enough. It was just a few business classes that we offered. It really weren't, you know, it wasn't a widespread thing. But then they grew, and they grew, and they grew. And so, you know, we have hundreds of students in these classes. And the first goal, or the first additional project would be coming up a way, with a way, to allow students to take the additional courses that you would need. So the program would probably be in business, and it would require some effort during the summer. So it would require summer courses. It would require perhaps some courses during the school year, some additional college courses. They're all things that students will be able to do because they can take classes remotely. So there is the possibility of developing a program like that, where we do have a pathway, where if a student says, one of my primary goals when coming into high school is to come out of Wayne Valley or Wayne Hills with an associate's degree, there's a pathway to do it. How many students do it? Hard to say going into it, but I imagine there's a chance there will certainly be some. And even if you graduate high school with 40 college credits and you take out a year and a half of tuition, at a regular tuition rate, that is the enormous benefit to any family. Okay? So recently, we had, as far as our additional projects, number two, we had an analysis of our website and our app. And what we wanna do is work on it to include more features and more functionality. I'll talk to the board a little bit more about that during the summer. The other thing that's really exciting is there are significant restroom issues at three of our elementary schools. There's only one bathroom, the Randall Carter, APT, and Fallot. And there are somewhere in the range of 60 to 70 staff members that use one bathroom. So as you can imagine, there's some heavy usage in each of those bathrooms. So we're expanding and we're adding bathrooms to each of those elementary schools. That's gonna go on the summer and in fall. That's a huge project that will make a huge difference for the staff at each of those schools. We're working on rebuilding our data center, which will lead to a much faster network that's easier to maintain and with increased security. We have the implementation of the Required Threat Assessment Team, so probably many of you have read about that. That's something that we will need to have in place for next year. Number six, the expansion of online and in-person professional development training for all relevant staff to meet the diverse needs of all students. Donna, do you wanna talk about that one?
Yeah, I think one of the things that we have done really well is we have an entire webpage dedicated to our teachers. So we have recorded a series. Teachers come in mid-year, teachers go out. Sometimes people take a short leave. They don't skip the bees because everything is recorded. You can go back to it. All of our Google Suite training is online and accessible. We have wellness webinars. We have given teachers flexible PD options so that they can get personalized PD to meet their own needs whenever they need it. And again, this is really because we have a fantastic Joke Technology Team. We have two teacher technology instructors, and we're going to be having supervisor next year. But with their help, we have, we also have our lunch and learn. But the fact that we're able to record these and offer them so people can't come, or we don't have substitutes for right coverage, so they're able to do it at night. We also have online tech evenings now, never anticipated, although we should have because we have very dedicated teachers. But there was significant participation, more than we ever imagined. So we have offered multiple sessions and recorded them all. Wellness also, lots of teachers have taken advantage of our wellness nighttime offerings. We record them. So if you're unable to participate, they can go back at any time. So I think that's something that makes us very unique and continues to attract teachers to come work in Wayne and stay in Wayne. They're well-supported.
So then, just to wrap up, we have contract negotiations this upcoming year with the Wayne Education Association, so one of our largest priority units, is also, we have contract negotiations kicking off sometime in the winter, I'm assuming. And we also have a project where we're thinking about artificial intelligence and one of the best practices. So in other words, artificial intelligence is affecting just about every business, every industry, every type of enterprise. And so for us, we need to see how we can best utilize that in our classrooms, what we can do that will help us as a school district to move ahead. And so I think that's a worthwhile forward-thinking goal, or goal to the project that we need to pursue, and the timing is right because there's so many questions about, well, how should artificial intelligence be used? Can it be used effectively? Is it just cheating? Those types of questions are out there. And so it's important for us to take all of that and start really understanding a little bit more about how we can use it best in our classrooms. Okay?
That concludes the presentation. We're happy to respond to any questions.
That's more of a comment. If you could just restate to the public that this is just a preview and a draft of district goals and what the public can do if they want to see additional goals, district goals.
Yep. So what we have is, this is, so these goals, the 2023-24 goals, are public work session ones. They're not anything the board is voting on in final form tonight. So the board will have feedback. The board will have ideas, so they're shared now or at a later time. And the public is invited to participate in a discussion about the district goals. So we do have a tab on Let's Talk. So Let's Talk is how we collect the information from the community. And there's a specific part of it that says district goals. So it's a trending topic. It says that it's a trending topic, district goals. And so if you wanna add or make suggestions or talk about things that you feel are important for the district to pursue, certainly that's your avenue to do that. And I'll share that with the board at the next meeting.
So, yeah, one goal that I thought that I would like to see, or, you know, the board would like to see, we can discuss further, would be a quantitative goal, you know, one that would measure, you know, based on either test scores or rankings or some kind of third-party measurement would be a goal I think we can discuss to see.
Student growth, if that makes sense. Student growth, if that makes sense.
Student growth?
Student growth, yeah, yeah.
So one thing, it's actually embedded, it's part of the special ed. Right now, Dr. Sarr is, she's taken the lead, and I'm just working with the outside consultants. We have, we're compiling a spreadsheet of every data point that we collect. We also use Linkit, but there are different benchmarks at each grade level associated with each program. Then you have your standardized testing. We have teachers who are just, you know, collecting information, assessing formatively, and they're gathering it that way. So there's a lot of, there's a huge variation. And when you're making decisions about kids, you're considering all of that. You're not just looking at a test score that was administered over, you know, four or five hours.
Well, what we do have is, just kind of go along with what Donna was saying, we already have a built-in system, we do have Linkit, and we do a variety of reports that we can produce, whether it's for pinch marks, standardized testing. So if there's a particular goal that you have in mind, or if it's just the existence of, of a way of doing that, that's something that we need to just discuss a little more.
It's included in the October annual testing presentation, we're required. So we always go way beyond. We, we take the standardized testing, the information that we have. Stark strong was not considered a reliable indicator. We take our vision math benchmarks, we take our reading benchmarks. We're working and we have been continuing to develop common assessments for our high schools to make sure that different teachers are assessing standards the same way. And, and we build that into that presentation. So maybe there's additional input about slides that we didn't deliver in the past that you'd like to see, and we can add additional slides.
Just a couple of comments. The learning management system is all overdue. I use one where I work. The great thing about it is you can differentiate with it. You can also challenge students with it. It's not, it's not the whole class, it can go to individuals. There's a lot of diversity with it. And it really is something that is all overdue here. Be interested to see what companies were, you know, looking at. Also, the dual credit program, it's a home lock. You basically, the one program I know with the county college here, you can get 60 credits for about $5,000, with the prices of what they are today. And William Patterson, those same 60 credits, of course, for $56,000. So it is a monetary savings, and anybody up here on board who sent kids go to college, know what it is, even if you're saving 15 credits, no matter what, through the private school, even, even public colleges today. It's not inexpensive. I think we have some great goals here, or challenging goals, both board and the district. And I think we're putting ourselves in a good position. And what we really need to do as a board and administration is have the foresight to look beyond today, tomorrow, and go out further. Because we need to be able to continue to meet challenges that our students are going to face in the future. One thing I would like to, you know, to look, to see the possibility of, and I know it's, it's difficult once the students leave us, but look at students who graduated and see if we can get their feedback, freshman year, sophomore year, you know, even if we can get 100 of the people we have who graduate to provide us feedback and say, have we did? Where, where, what good things did we do? Where can we do better? You know, that's really almost part of one of your goals here. But I'd like to, you know, maybe we can consider something like that. But I think great job with the goals and, you know, space in the student population is really the major issue facing this district. Thank you. Captain.
I just want to highlight for the audience and folks at home that it may look odd to you that we're doing a goal over a two-year period, but in a district the size of Wayne, accomplishing something as big as, say, special education, a one-year goal is not enough. There's too many moving parts to the program, there's too much that has to be considered, and then again, you have to add the cost factor, et cetera. The fact that we're doing these goals over a two-year period makes sense because we're being substantive with it and the deep dive is being done in a way that, once we set it, it's going to move us forward over several years. It's not just going to be a stopgap, Band-Aid situation at the end of the day. And for me, the biggest goal this year is the referendum planning. I think we can't highlight that enough, we can't talk about it enough, we can't explain it to the community enough. There is, we're, we're at a critical point, but we're also at a point of opportunity as Dr. Toback mentioned with the fall off of the debt service, where we can get quite a bit accomplished at really no change in cost to the taxpayer. But of course, it's not going to be enough. We, we are going to have to ask for more, but if we, if we do a multi-question situation, you know, you'll be able to tell us what, what, what you can bear. But it's important that we explain the why, and that's what we're going to be doing over the next several months. 2,000 units approximately, that's a lot of kids that are coming to this community. And unfortunately, the way this affordable housing has shaken out, there's no money for the schools. We get nothing. There may be some additional tax revenue, but it's a negative ratable. It's, for whatever amount we get, the community has to spend it, has to spend it educating the kids, has to spend it on services like fire and rescue and garbage and roads and all those things. I mean, sewer, it's, it's going to be monumental. So I don't think we, and I don't like fear-mongering or those sort of tactics, I'm not trying to scare anybody, I'm just trying to express the importance of it. And, you know, hopefully whoever's listening, you know, you can start talking to your neighbors about it, encourage them to come to these meetings so they can really hear the facts, not just, ah, the board wants more money, they want to raise our taxes, I'm sick and tired of taxes. Well, those taxes support the value of your home. And I know me, I'm technically a senior citizen, I'm on a fixed income. I would love to stay in Wayne, but I also know that, hey, shut up, Duffy. Taxes are hard for me to pay, but you know what? These schools mean a lot to me, obviously, and they should mean a lot to everyone. And it's just something we're going to have to come to a good conclusion on, and hopefully we can get something done to keep our class sizes the way they need to be. What I, another thing I don't think people realize about our schools is we don't utilize them the same way we did years ago. They say, well, I remember when there was 10,000 kids in the school district, and we had the same number of buildings. And the class sizes were, what, 35, 40 in a, in a room? Well, what parent wants that nowadays? And not to mention the laws have changed. You can't put that many children in a classroom. And as we just discussed with special ed, we've brought in so many in-house programs over the years, they're taking up classroom space. We have extra classes for the children that need it, we have therapies, we have occupational services. All sorts of related services that we do in-house, earrings, speech, everything. That didn't happen 20 years ago. These things didn't, maybe even 10 years ago, we didn't have these things in-house. So, and, and that's what makes us a great school district. So we have a lot to talk about, and I just hope everyone will start to listen and, and hear what needs to be said and show up. And vote when the time comes. Thank you.
2038, oh boy. It speaks of George Jetson, it speaks of Back to the Future, it speaks of things that we're not really dealing with because it seems to be so far in the future. Name me one thing out there that costs less than it did 15, 20 years ago. Everything we're planning right now, we're basing all the prices now, if we were forced to do it in 2030 or 2035, what do you think the costs are going to be? It doesn't get any cheaper in these cases. The state of New Jersey comes out with rules every year about students with individual education plans, and they've got square footage requirement for certain students in certain areas. So you may have this particular room, could have, fire code could say it could hold 300 people in it. But if you've got 15 students or 20 students with very particular IEPs, this room is too small for whatever their requirements are. So we are a victim of our own success because, as Ms. Kazan said, we're providing a lot of these services. And, you know, Ms. Reishman talked about a best practice that Wayne went and presented to other schools, and that signals to people, we're doing a good job, people want to come here, and they want to move their families here. And if, God forbid, they have a child with a very particular special need, I'll tell you right now, the very first thing they're going to look at and say, what town covers this? What town has this? And the word allotment comes up, Wayne's got it. So they pack their bags and they move to Wayne, which we walk them with open arms, but they're coming in with a child who has a special need, and we need the space, and we're going to need the funding. And the state of New Jersey is not going to back down on the requirements for these students for the betterment of the students. It's half the case we have right now. When I was going to high school, we never talked about these types of issues. We didn't talk about autistic spectrum, we didn't talk about 30 disabilities, we just had that kid. And all of a sudden, it's no longer that kid, it's this person's child, it's a wonderful gift that's been given to this town, to society, and we have a moral obligation to do our very best for them. And it costs us time, and it costs money, and it costs space. And space is the one thing, it's right to C+ on that list over there because we're getting smaller. If I think I asked Dr. Toback, I know I'm not going to pull him right now, but if I asked, what's our capacity right now, square footage versus students, he probably put it at nine, above 90% every building. There's no corridors that are empty. Ryerson Elementary, where my student, my, my two children went to, they've had an entire wing dedicated to this now, and they may service, and again, I don't know the numbers, but not a very large amount of students because they need that whole space. There goes a whole side of the building to handle these very, very special people here who deserve and need this. And the state law says it, and we as educational professionals say, they need this and more because we're Wayne and we do it better, which is proof we did it better here. So this is our plea, this is the big opening salvo of our plea. We're trying to do this early, we're trying to do this often, we're trying to explain to you in situations where we're not just looking to reach for dollars, we're looking to reach for your students. And that's something we're really, really hoping to do. And to finish off, with Mr. Pavlik saying was $56,000 for William Patterson, my daughter just graduated Seton Hall University, 60 credits is $92,000 for 60 credits at Seton Hall University. And Rutgers is about two-thirds of that amount here. So we're always screaming about, how can we, you know, cut the cost of living? How is the society, can we, you know, prevent these kids from walking out with a $250,000 bill and a bachelor's science and there's no job and, oh my God, what am I going to do now? This is where it happens, right in this room, right now, when we start pushing through things like, I'm going to walk out of here for $5,000 with half of a bachelor's degree, and it's going to cost me only half as much as it would. And the degree does not say, you know, Rutgers, Seton Hall, King, with a little bit of extra credit from the college, it's the name of the degree they take it on. Every one of these colleges, when they recruit says, we'll take in so many credits. The first selling point they're doing with these kids, I know both my kids are looking at this, it's the selling point they're talking about here. So let's go ahead and keep pushing that forward. It's an excellent job they're doing right now. And anytime you want to bring more credits in, put my name to it, I'll be more than happy to help you on, anybody can, because it's the biggest secret in education right now. Look at Time Magazine, or you look at Newsweek, and how can we cut the cost of living? How can we cut, you know, the cost of this crazy college education? That's the way you do it. Thank you.
So the question I have is, well, great comment. The question I have around the dual enrollment, right, which I think is great, I think is a great program. It is heavier weighted towards more English business kind of courses at the moment, less so towards technology and a little bit towards sciences, there's some good stuff in there for sciences. Are we looking to even that out as well? Because I hear with, you know, going down on the business side, I think that'll be great, fantastic for the students there, but I would like to make sure that that's available to all of the students and careers they want.
So what I will say about that is that, so if you are going to teach an enrollment course.
Speak louder.
Sorry. If you're going to teach an enrollment course, the college will not agree to it unless you have a master's degree. So it's not that you could take a staff member who has just an undergraduate doing an ass to teach an enrollment course through the college to approve it. So ultimately, the college approves all of these things. So in some cases, we would like to offer classes in other areas. In some cases, there's opportunities to do that. In other cases, there's not because you have tenured staff members who have a bachelor's degree but do not have a master's degree. So that sometimes places limits on what we're able to do. As far as computer science goes, there is something that we're looking to do, we're looking to start an academy for computer science. So that's something we've been talking about, maybe that's something that happens with the referendum, but we recognize that we have the capacity to actually run a very good computer science academy right here in Wayne. So that's something we are, we are looking to have. But we have, we have a lot of other things going on, and perhaps that would be one of the ways that would get to an associate's degree, and maybe the computer science department could be part of that. So it's something that we've looked at, we've basically looked at every opportunity that we have, and we've taken advantage of what's available to us based on our current staffing. There are opportunities to hire staff members with a master's degree, that opens up more opportunities.
What about opportunities to help our staff members, we have now obtained a master's?
We have a program to help staff members in high-demand areas. So if someone is interested, we can tuition the reimbursement program, but if there's something that's really in demand, or someone that would allow us to do something like that, the district does pay for those types of things a little more directly than, a little bit beyond what the teacher's contract calls for, but that's with permission of the teachers union, because everyone gets the same, they get the same reimbursement, so you don't want to create an unfair.
Yeah.
If it's a high demand area, we do do that.
We have proposed many new contracts this year, different programs, so they go through the education grade, but we could compile a list and bring it back to the education committee to report out because there have, we have a lot of contracts.
Full offerings, we have, I mean, the course offering.
A lot of the lectures.
Yeah. The course offering manual has all that.
Yeah.
So that's the easy thing to do. If I could just say one thing, one entertaining story. So a lot of districts have strategic plans, and so I just wanted to say, why do we have this system of goals? Why does, why does it, the Wayne County Public Schools has the system that we have? We have the system because when I started, I asked, do we have a strategic plan? And the board told me, no, we don't have a strategic plan. And then I said, well, I wonder if it would make sense if we put together a strategic plan? And I was told by one of our former board members, well, I hate to break it to you, but you're probably not going to be here long enough for that. That was, that's the advice I received. And so I said, okay, so we have to do something, and we have to do something that makes sense. And so that was really the genesis of having annual goals for the district because at the time, there was no expectation that the administration would be around.
Standing.
Right. So I believe Mrs. Kazan might remember when that happened?
No comment.
But it happened, so it's real, but that's, that's why we have the system. But, but I will say, since that time, we've also done a really good job with it. We've had like 45 or 50 different goals that we've had in the timeline that Donna had been working here, and all of those goals have led to meaningful, positive changes in these school districts. So it also happens because of the goal, because of the goals being supported by the board of ed. So that's, that's another big thing. Some of these goals do cost quite a bit of money, but the fact is that those funds are allocated, the board supports these goals, and then when we all work together, all these goals are achieved. So I just wanted to thank the board for your support, hopefully going ahead with these goals and also in prior years for supporting the goals that we have. Thank you very much.
I just want to, one thing, and we'll add this at this point, I want to recognize Dr. Bouchard in fact, because in all honesty, all these, all these things we're talking about technology-wise, and I will say it right here, and I've said it before, the things, the programs and everything that Joe put into place since he's came, since he came here, was the reason that when the pandemic hit, we were able to flip the switch and go remote the next day. Because if we didn't have the infrastructure, we didn't have the one-to-one program that he piloted, and it was.
Give him a hard time now?
Yes. And it was, and it was a headache, no doubt. We never would have been where we were. We would have been like the other districts, trying to buy 5,000 computers from Dell and hoping
We would have been like the other districts, trying to buy 5,000 computers from Dell and hoping they'd come. But I really, I want to recognize Joe for everything he does. Thank you, Joe. Mr. Moffitt, your turn.
Yes, we have some additions to the agenda tonight under the emergent. Nothing for the PWS section, but when you get to the emergent T. Human resources, we'll be adding two items tonight. The first one, number nine, approval of sidebar agreement. The recommended action reads as follows. Resolved that the Wayne Township Board of Education approved sidebar agreement regarding the district assistant principal in charge of athletics, dated June 1, 2023, with the Wayne Township Administrators Association. The board president and board secretary are authorized to execute appropriate documentation to implement same and attached by reference. Second one in this area is number 10, approval of sidebar agreement. Resolved that the Wayne Township Board of Education approved sidebar agreement regarding observations dated June 1, 2023, with the Wayne Township Administrators Association. The board president and the board secretary are authorized to execute appropriate documentation to implement same and attached by reference. And finally, under section X, which is legal, approval of contract. That action reads as follows. Resolved that the Board of Education approves entering into a contract with Hunterden Learning Center for instructional service for student ID number 3154389154 in the amount of $42,750 as discussed in executive session and attached by reference. The board president and board secretary are authorized to execute appropriate documentation to implement same. That concludes the changes to our agenda tonight.
Thank you. This time we're open to the public on agenda items only. This portion of the meeting is open to citizens for comment on agenda items only. Residents are asked to state their name, address and subject matter. Comments may be limited to three minutes per person. Members of the public are discouraged from speaking negatively about an employee or student. The board bears no responsibilities for comments made by the public. Comments regarding employees or students cannot be legally responded to by the board. Other comments may be responded to tonight or at a subsequent meeting or business level mover. This is Kazan, Mr. Duffey, anyone from the public on agenda items. See nobody except Cory? Mr. Duffy?
Second.
Mr. Baxter? Community reports.
Today, the finance committee met at 4:30 virtually. It was attended by myself, Mr. Pavlik, Mrs. Kazan, Mr. Moffitt, Mrs. Leidig. And we had a special guest, Justin Gallo from Polaris Galaxy Group. He came in to discuss our insurance packages that we have and what the premiums are possibly going to look at, look like. We will get some quotes by the 16th of June. You know, he, he gave us an update on what's going on in the industry. It seems like property insurance premiums are going up. And we're probably looking at around a 24% increase in property insurance. Also going around the industry is higher workers comp all across the board. We're probably going to be looking at something in the high 50% increases in workers' comp. That had to do with basically everyone back at work, trips and falls, more claim frequency. Lawyer claims are open longer. So those type of issues there. We approved the minutes for, for last week, for last month, May 1st. There were, there were no questions there. We went through the agenda items, the financial reports, the 2023, 2024 lunch, breakfast price list, which is on the agenda for everyone to see, transportation contract. Other contracts for 2023, 2024 is a long list there. The Wayne Adult Community Center lease that we have there, there's going to be a 3% increase there. We talked about the NJ SIG Safety Grant. We'll be receiving $12,735 there. We'll use it for security vest fuel. The emergent checks, the emergent contract lease that we're going to have for Iris UBS that's been mentioned previously. We're going to apply for a federal attached credit there. Let's see what else we, we'll have a list of contracts for renewal up in next meeting. So we could review all those. There's going to be an application for the PCIA lease purchase agreement, which basically is for computers and vehicles. We're going to look at the capital maintenance reserve deposits. Basically, June is going to be a, a big month. As Ms. Leidig mentioned, it's her Super Bowl. We're going to close the books. We're going to close the books for the year there. The reserve withdrawal for, we're going to clean up the residual funds and, and use towards the 15 Ellis project. As far as the ROD grants and the SDA, ECC and referendum updates, we haven't gotten any feedback for the SDA, ECC, nothing on the, on the ROD grants. Referendum updates, we're moving forward with the, with the architects. We had a dental arbitration update, you know, what, what it would cost, you know, for, for legal and to pay back the employees, all the employees. And like I mentioned, you know, the administrators are going to be busy in June, closing out the year and pressing for the audit. And we had some, some policy updates that are, that are mandatory. So we took them as presented.
Can you have the committees meet?
That's not like, only me, only the guests. Yes, technology met last night virtually with Ms. Batter shield, Ms. Batter shield and Ms. Fatah, myself and Dr. Bouchard. We spoke about the data center upgrade, phone project upgrade, summer planning, the purchase of some new computers and the ability to recycle. Parts of the older computers, such as motherboard, the screens, assistance of that, hiring of a supervisor of educational technology in VD and learning management system upgrade. Anything else we discussed is security system.
That's it. Yesterday, we, the communications committee met virtually. It was Mr. Duffy, Ms. Grilloso, myself and Dr. Toback. I will save the gorilla in the room for last. We'll go back to that because it's an important topic to talk about. We'll probably enter into some issues tonight. But we talked about several different topics. One of them was company, Atige evaluated our websites, see what was working, what was not working, how to make it better, how to grant people better, how to disseminate communication better. One of the things that I personally see myself and I point out to the meeting, Dr. Toback gave me credit for it. A website designed for a computer is not very good at translating onto a phone app. A web app on a phone may be very well done, but it's very, very difficult to translate it correctly over to a PC. It's been a lifelong issue since smartphones came out. And there's a look at possibly making just two separate distinct ones with a single link between them. So that you have people who use phones to get their information, to disseminate their information, to gather the information. And then people like the old guys like me, like using a computer with a mouse, can sit down and go through it in detail on our own way of doing things so that it's more effective as a website. It's great as an excellent website, but we're always looking to find out what's better, how can we do it better, how can it work better? So we're willing to take the criticism, say fix this, this doesn't work right. And we received a rather detailed presentation with Dr. Toback from his company about what things we should do, what things were doing right, what things could we do and improve upon those. We're using let's talk as one of the things we're talking about in the presentation, which is effective. But there was a serious discussion about bringing back the concept of fraud exchange. There were issues with it in the past and we've been assured those issues that we had in the past have been addressed and will be taken up to the next level. I'm sure it will be given a very thorough vetting of it before we bring it out again. But one that was working correctly, it was a very, very effective way of getting input in from the community over topics. Not just finding out what the topic was, but how many people really felt about a certain situation, whatever it happened to be. And our hope is to put that out so that people can understand or we can give them more information about the referendum. That's the thing we're really focusing on here. The worst thing you could do in a situation like this is have somebody just doesn't understand it, but it's not. So we're trying to disclose all the information. But at the same time, we're also putting out effort to get that information from the public to us. So we know what they're missing. So we know what to correctly provide for them early on. So we can do early and often so that the community really understands what we're doing and why we're doing here. So this is one of the things that we're considering going over. There were two major issues that came out in the news press. The communications committee always looks at what the press has placed out here. One of the articles came out about increased enrollment and how some people commented incorrectly that it's scary, what we're, what's coming down the line at us, not even, you know, as, as Mr. Pavlik has said, we haven't had a shovel on the ground yet and we're worried about stuff with these new buildings. We're talking about 2038. If we don't do it now in 2038, we're really in trouble here. So when that article was brought out there, that was, you know, we'd sit down, we'd go over those articles. And, you know, that gets circulated amongst the board, understand this is our priority and let's tie that into the other things we're doing. The last part was the one topic that took the most time of the communications. I've been on this board for four years now and I've been in communications for three of those four years. And I've never had a communications meeting like I had yesterday. And the number one topic within Bullock was the reporting, the fine reporting of the journalists, not just Wayne tapped into, but other articles were caught on to it about the issue of the parents coming to last meeting about harassment, intimidation and bullying. And that's the gorilla in the room or not. It's the 800 pound gorilla in the corner that we're going to start dealing with. We always know as a board that we have our agendas, we want to look at and our future stuff. But then things come out of left field and smack us in the forehead and we're going to turn around and say, okay, this is something we've got to look at here. And so we got smacked in the forehead and said, okay, this is something we're really going to have to look at. A lot of issues were brought up. We won't get specific on them. But we talked about ideas about trying to get more of the community in general involved in it. This is not just a sixth, seventh, eighth grade issue. This is not a high school issue. This is a Wayne issue. And honestly, it's a Passaic County issue. It's a New Jersey issue. It's a national issue. Let's not mince it here. We are now a society that is more conscious about these issues. And we're trying to be more conscious about the people it's affecting. So when you lift the rock, you find the bugs. And this is the point, we're starting to lift the rock and we're starting to find the bugs and we're starting to say, okay, what are we going to do about this? And we banked it around some ideas. We talked about possibly addressing issues at orientation, especially this experience coming into the middle school or the ninth graders coming into the high school. Because we've got those, those two groups always, because there's always an orientation. Maybe we bring this up or maybe we bring this as a community event here, add it on to other issues here and say, people, this is real. This is something we have to identify here and it just can't be the schools fixing it. This is a societal issue and societal issues are fixed by society. And how do we as a communications group get that message out to these people so that we can start addressing this issue? We've been looking at it and the pandemic really threw us through a horrible loop, but it also made us more conscious about others, other people's feelings and other people's social emotional learning and social emotional development. So it's become at the forefront. We're talking about things we didn't talk about 20 years ago or 15 years ago or 10 years ago. We just didn't. Now as a society, we've evolved. So now this issue has come to the communications and we're sitting down and saying, okay, we got to do something about this. Let's get some ideas together. We're going to take them up to the general board in a couple of weeks and say, we want to try this, we want to try this, we want to try this. And then get the board's entire back, which I don't think is not going to be a problem, but that's part of the process. And that was a very, very large part of the meeting, a very long meeting, probably two thirds longer than most communication meetings I've ever been at. It's usually, let's take a look at, you know, the newsletter and everything was happy and positive. Now some serious came about and now serious questions deserve serious answers. And that's what we're taking a look at. And now it's basically what happened and occurred at the communications meeting. Thank you. Walking it down. I can comment. I'm going to comment. I was going to wait for money because the education committee is not going to need again for money. We're going to put the board together, but education committee sat down and again, to get my brain on this. Ms. Wintick was present. Mr. Miganelly was there. George Washington, Mr. Leonard was at the, was present at the meeting, myself, Ms. Grilloso was at the meeting. And that meeting was, we had an eighth grade trip out of Guff. And they, they said there were a couple of small issues with it. The big thing was the accommodations had errors here and there, but there's very little with way of issues. The students could behave themselves excellently. The teachers are very happy, very proud of what, of their conduct. Everything left other than, you know, they talk about hotel towels. Okay, I'll deal with hotel towels. Kids can wear my hotel towels. I'm good with that. But they, they did their tours. They did Annapolis, which was, I wish, wish I had gone. It's a phenomenal location. Go to Baltimore. So Dr. Leonard gave us the, the run back and said the kids had a great time. The usual one or two kids get sick, eat too much candy, drink too much water, run around and somebody gets sick. That happens at every trip. He said, don't worry about it. I've been doing 20 years. Happens every trip here. We then fast forward to what are we going to do next year? And there was a survey put out and it was a very, very close survey between the traditional Washington DC trip, a trip on going to Gettysburg slash to. Hershey. I always get Hershey or Doornham stuff. To Hershey Park. And then there was another one going to a local park for almost like a, an eighth grade fest where you get to spend time together at it. Well, it came out 42, 48, 3%. So we kind of said, okay, the, the park stuff's not going to happen here. But there was a slightly larger vote for going to Gettysburg and going to Hershey. It's a much more secure trip. I'm not saying there's anything wrong with Washington DC, but it's kind of contained the way the tours work. And then you go on to Hershey Park where they can go run around and eat and drink and run on wild rides and throw up and all this stuff you do at Hershey Park here where they, they throw them on these rides here. But the point is, it came out to be much more appealing. It is also more cost efficient. The Washington DC trip, I'm going to give the exact numbers on it. We'll get them later on here. But the DC trip is a couple hundred dollars more than the, the trip that people are preferring here. So it's like, well, it looks that we're going to try to invest in going with the Gettysburg Hershey one. For those parents of those who really want to stick to tradition, I understand and we sympathize with it. But if it gets too costly, a lot of people won't go. There was only a 65% of the eighth graders going to this trip this year. And we suspect that we're going to hand them another trip that's even more costly, that even fewer kids are going to go. So it starts becoming self-defeating. So the whole thing at this point was, and we're going with numbers and common sense here. We still want to take feedback from the community. We still understand that people are very passionate about the traditions. My daughter went to Washington DC. My son didn't go anywhere, but my daughter went there. It was a wonderful trip. But I think we're really focusing, especially after the pandemic, is it's more they want to be together versus being together at spot A or spot B or spot C. It's the last time that they're going to get together as a class. And that's the connection that we're learning is just as important as whether you go see Gettysburg or Annapolis or the Washington Monument or Hershey Park or a park here somewhere in Passaic County. So that's the big thing that was talked about at the meeting. So we're, nothing sealed up here. People are still wide open, but that's where the numbers look like. Going right now and we'll want to take it with the entire community as always, of course. So that's the first half of the meeting. The second half will meet on Monday. We'll get the rest of it. And our virtual meeting is coming Monday. Thank you. Thank you. So more fish to pop. Yes, more fish to pop. Thank you very much. Can you move her to the agenda?
I'll move the entire agenda.
Zach, Mr. Duffy, who's that? Mr. Duffey? I'm talking to him tonight. I can tell.
Really?
Discussion tonight.
I have a couple of items I want to discuss. So I know K2, the calendar is up for discussion. I, I think we need to discuss the June 19th date. It's a federal holiday. And I know we have graduation scheduled for that day. I don't think that is a good date to have graduation. If we could possibly move it to the 18th or something, something else. if we could possibly move it to the 18th, or something else. We've never heard of Juneteenth?
I just said it was June 19th.
You say Juneteenth?
It is June 19th, June 19th is Juneteenth, so. So anyway, so I would recommend, as a board, consider we move the graduation date.
The 19th is Monday.
All right, yeah, so, no, no, it's 24th? In 2024?
Oh, I'm sorry, my apologies.
This is the 2023, 2024, that we're changing. So I recommend we change that one, and since we're revising it, I know, you know, I've mentioned this before, I know we have the hyperlink with all of the holidays there, but I think we should have Hanukkah mentioned, you know, this way, you know, our schools and staff and students refer to this calendar for events and other events scheduling, so if we can mention Hanukkah, and we can mention Christmas, I think it would make sense, since Christmas is also the beginning of the winter recess, December 25th. So that's one thing I'd like to discuss tonight, and also U5, the emergent policy to abolish the public relations policy, I'd recommend kicking that back into the policy committee. I know it is similar to 9120, and might be redundant on some items, so I wanted to just. So, you want to make a motion?
I mean, if you want to make a motion, let's do it right any time. And first of all, first. Dr. Tobak, the input, I think the graduate, moving the graduation date this time, I think is a big problem. Because, 2024, because I believe the PTOs have already secured their contracts from 2020. I think that could be a potential, that's what I'm talking about, which I think is a potential issue, and that's why we never change the last day of school because of that. The 19th with the graduations, 2024, from the calendar schedule that I saw. Dr. Tobak?
Give me one second. I have a copy of the calendar, but unfortunately, it's the copy of the one without the revision.
Yeah, that's the one I have. 2024 is a Wednesday. Thank you.
I can't hear you.
Well, I talked about the topic, we don't hear it.
I was informing Ms. Rigoloso and, sorry, this, sorry, this, that I tried doing this years ago with changing the graduation date, and we couldn't change it because of Project Graduation, and I just was informing them that I was down this road once before, and it got a kick to the curb because Project Graduation.
Well, welcome to such a calendar. I understand your comment about Hanukkah and Christmas, what is it that you're looking to do?
Just add it to the calendar, so everyone can see in case there's conflicts with events. You know, Hanukkah comes up earlier in December, so.
Aren't they on the calendar?
No, they're not on the calendar.
They're not on the published.
Or asking if they'd be put on the calendar, why they don't fall on the school day?
Just listed.
They're not listed on the calendar. E is on there next year, it's during spring break next year, and so there's been, historically there's been conflicts of events being held on religious holidays, so since we're opening a Pandora's Box with these plans, they're changing it, might as well bring it up.
Hanukkah is.
No, the changes are already there, so.
Hanukkah's not a holiday for school, though, neither is Christmas, we are at winter break, but we have Yom Kippur and Rosh Hashanah, those are the holidays celebrated on the calendar.
We're off on Christmas, December 25th is the beginning of winter recess.
Everybody else is. You don't want to change it, we just want it listed on the calendar. Wanted to see Christmas. Christmas and Hanukkah.
Hanukkah and.
Do you try to change things?
There's events going on, we're adding workshops all the time, right? So we had workshops, we had a dual enrollment workshop the other day, if it's on someone's holiday, if it's the first day of Hanukkah, I'm not going to be able to attend, you know, or somebody's not going to be able to attend that night, you know, to listen about dual enrollment or for their high school.
They plan the calendar.
Well, we have, I'm trying to make it easier for people, I'm trying to make it easier for staff, I'm trying to make it easy for people. So anyway, the calendar is on the agenda to allow for June 6, 2024 Election Day to be closed.
That's a slow.
And we're waiting for you?
You know, there was a discussion going on, I didn't want to speak out of turn.
Good, Mark.
So, just a little bit about the history of the calendar. So the calendar is pretty much in the same format that it's been in for many years. The calendar that we have only indicates dates that are off and the reasons why we have those dates off. So in some cases, there are religious holidays that are mentioned, in other cases, there are new federal holidays like Labor Day. The district has not traditionally recognized every federal holiday, and so that's something that is not always included on the calendar. If you want to include federal holidays, you can. If you want to include Juneteenth, that's fine, there's all things that we can do. We'll push back the dates, so the goal that the board has had for a number of years, due to concerns of the community, so sort of balancing out the discussion, is that every effort was being made to push the end of the school year towards the middle of June. And so that has been an ongoing effort of the board. However, there are other things that come up, those are the holidays that we recognize, so that becomes a difficult thing to do. But certainly, we can, we can start, I mean, once you recognize a holiday, that stays as a permanent fixture in the calendar. So certainly, that would be, that would be the case with Juneteenth, and that's fine, and if you wanted to recognize different holidays, but I think the solution, Mr. Prasatos said they came up with last year, is you're talking about two holidays, and the whole point is, if we're going to have an inclusive calendar, the reason why we have that at the very bottom, the Department of Ed approved school year observances, is there are literally, there's hundreds of holidays. So the board would have the task of, if we're going to be fair to all groups, we would really need to come up with a calendar that reflects lots of different groups, lots of different religions, and that's fine, too. But I think we took a step by having that link there, so that is a planning tool that people can use to put there. As far as, as far as different events being planned in the district, I mean, again, this is not, for example, if I'm a principal and planning an event, I'm not looking at this calendar per se, I'm looking at my own calendar and my school calendar, so really, this has no bearing, it doesn't help employees, it doesn't really do much, it's a foundation for the community, and it's a foundation for the schools to have a calendar, but from their school calendars, of course. So people who very much work in the schools are aware of different holidays, the start of different holidays, the end of different holidays, the fact that their school community may or may not have a significant number of students that might be affected by a particular religious holiday, all that goes on in our schools based on the enrollment into the school. So there is some, there are some individual considerations that are given to different students who may observe different holidays, so that's basically where we operate as a district. If that's the word, but again, if you're going to recognize one holiday, there's a lot of others, and so there are many people in the community that could be very upset by some changes in the calendar.
So, yeah, I understand, and, you know, thank you, I know we have the hyperlink there. The primary reason, I guess, I'm bringing this up is the graduation date being on the federal holiday in the evening of Wednesday, June 19th for 2024. So that's, that's my, my primary question is the appropriateness for that, and I, I mean, if everyone's fine with it, I'm fine, too, you know, bringing it up for discussion, if it could be moved or not, I'm just bringing it up.
It can be moved. I mean, there's all kinds of things that can be done.
Graduation, can you vote?
Well, once, once we have the date set, though, absolutely not, that's when things really.
But the question is, have the PTOs already done their contracts and everything, because I know they, once we come out with that preliminary schedule, they're going to town to get everything secured. And that's, that's my concern about us just sitting here tonight and arbitrarily moving this. I think there's a lot of moving pieces. The other problem, the other problem with a school calendar, and Dr. Tobak, we know this well, we've been doing it a long time, we can take every holiday there is off, but then we're going to school 12 months out of the year. You have to fit 180 days in between September 1st and June 30th, no matter how you do it, you can slice the pie any way you want, you need to get 180 in between September 1st and June 30th. That's it. The state says you have to finish school by June 30th. So we can sit here and hash out every holiday, the state, oh, it's a federal holiday, it's a state holiday, it's this holiday, it's that holiday, that's well and good, but where are you going to stop? That's the problem.
So, Mr. Padway, if I could make this suggestion, I believe you're 100% correct on the idea that this is not really appropriate for him to go back and forth about these different types of options that we have in terms of redesigning the calendar, it's kind of a last minute thing, so perhaps we'd like to think about this for a while, it's not something that we have to do immediately. We do have some time, if the board would like to recognize different holidays, or if there are some things the board would like to do as a group, we might, we might need some time to think about that.
That'd be a good idea. Kathy?
Okay, I think adding other holidays to the calendar is confusing, everything, the school calendar is just about the days you're in and the days you're not. Any changes to that at this point, I think would just add confusion. Historically, this is the way it's been done, we've also already voted on the calendar, it goes through a lengthy committee process, this is, it's only on the agenda because of a minor revision, so it's way too late in the game to be looking to change things that we've already voted on several months ago. People are planning vacations around this, it's just really the wrong timing. But calendars in general, historically, have always been difficult. When I was board president a few years ago, I was at the point where I was so tired of hearing about how everybody hated the calendar, that I asked Dr. Tobak to put together a citizens committee, they came back with three recommendations, we're only allowed to give one. So they couldn't even come to consensus in this committee of members of the community, members of the staff, someone from the board, administrators, and they just couldn't find common ground, it was, we just had to take it back, and eventually, the board made the final decision. But, yeah, I'm not a fan of adding even further confusion to a school, everyone has a calendar, you know, in their house, they have a calendar on their phone, look at it, today's okay, but today's holiday. It's not something that we need to allure our school community about, there's no reason for it to be on the calendar, just for confusing. It's gross, you know that.
Yeah, I mean, it's on the agenda, so I saw something where I wanted to make sure nobody was offended, I'm going to be off, my day job, most likely, next year, June 19th, I'm going to be off, it's a federal holiday, so I want to make sure it's an appropriate tip, graduation on June 19th, you know, and I don't want anyone to be offended, that's it.
There's a motion on the floor.
So, we, go ahead, so the motion, move the entire agenda.
I was going to make one.
President, that's already been motioned and seconded?
Yes.
So I just want to make a motion on U5 to send the Public Relations Policy Number 9100 to be reviewed by the policy committee to see if, in fact, there is redundancy with other policies, so that way we can abolish this.
Can I second the motion? Are you on the policy committee?
I'm on the policy committee, and it was never brought to the policy committee, and that's why I'd like to second it.
Was it or wasn't? It wasn't. So was it in any committee?
This is a Strauss Suss.
Strauss Suss, the recommendation.
I understand that, but usually it goes to one committee or another, it does not everything goes to policy, it might have gone to communications, was it discussed in communications?
I'm on the communication committee as well.
Where was it discussed? Was it discussed anywhere?
It was not discussed in the community, because it's one of the recommendations from Strauss Suss, so when they have the recommendation.
Was it a mandated recommendation?
And they're saying it's redundant, and they're saying it's redundant, and typically the board, there's a paragraph that explains why it's redundant, and so typically, it's not a major policy. Obviously, what's there is very important, but it is covered by Strauss Suss, so that's the recommendation to you as a board, and if you'd like to discuss it further, or to look further into it, then that's going to do it.
Go with Strauss Suss, that's what we're saying.
We have a quick motion to.
Hold on.
Need to take a ball on the first one, or?
No, this is a secondary motion.
Motion to.
Yeah, motion to pull U5, which is Policy Number 911, which is to abolish, or pulling that, to go back to the policy committee for a discussion in comparison to Policy 9120, which is a redundant policy.
Correct.
I have a mover, is Mr. Prasatos, seconded by Mrs. Rigoloso.
Overall?
On secondary motion, Mr. Giordano.
Of course I better go first. I love you. Yes.
Yes, and Mrs. Kazan?
I don't see the point, but although, yes.
Mrs. Rigoloso?
Yes.
Mr. Battershill?
Yes.
Mr. Duffy?
I'll vote yes, but do you know when the next policy committee is? Can we have a definitive answer by that, because time is of the essence? By the next policy committee? I'll vote yes.
We don't understand.
Record it as a yes. Mr. Prasatos?
Yes.
And Mr. Padway?
Yes.
Motion passes. So right now, it's the whole remaining portion of the agenda is?
We'll call on the agenda.
The whole agenda minus U5, as you see, again, I'm sorry, Mr. Giordano, you go first.
Yes.
Stick his hand.
Thank you. Excuse me?
You're next, I'm going to call.
Yes.
Mr. Rigolos, Mrs. Rigoloso?
Yes.
Mr. Battershill?
Yes.
Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Mr. Prasatos?
Yes.
And Mr. Padway?
Yes.
The motion carries.
All right, this portion of the meeting is open to citizens for comment on any topic. Residents are asked to state your name, address, and subject matter, comments may be limited to five minutes per person, members of the public are discouraged from speaking negatively about an employee or a student, the board bears no responsibilities for comments made by the public, comments regarding employees or students cannot be legally responded to by the board, other comments may be responded to tonight or at subsequent meeting in rural business. So I have a mover.
Mover, second.
Mr. Giordano, Mr. Battershill, anyone from the public on any item?
Oh, well, that'll come up. We're waiting for you, well, you're old.
My bad.
I understand why.
Yeah, I was six months old at home last night.
The chairs don't help.
There's no crying here.
No, thank God.
Not, not a lot, anyway.
Mayor Girkov, 3K Drive, New Jersey, I'm excited that I came tonight, and also a little saddened that I came tonight, I'm excited. I'm excited because it was quite a different type of meeting than I'm used to, and a lot of different things were discussed, and the, all these different items for the next two years were discussed. And the reason I'm saddened is because, as was mentioned earlier about you sending the Communications Committee, I guess I prefer to, about this news article about the HIV, which is what I saw yesterday and prompted me to come, and I've stood before this committee before. I'm going to repeat what I've said before. You've heard it before. I also saw on one of the slides a $400,000 cost for one of the mental health programs. You may know which one I'm referring to. I couldn't really see. It was kind of hard, and I didn't have done the paper. For $400,000, $15,000 for mental health first aid training, I believe that was the number. That's a lot of money, and what I've heard the entire night is how everything is costly. There's just, the insurance is going up. I have only insurance from Arson of Abi. We have to deal, we know insurances are going up. Workers' comp is crazy. I understand that there are 7,600 students in this district, and less than 2% receive counseling. 120 students, you said it's maxed out. That's less than 2% of the students. Who may, who knows how many need, but that's less than 2% of students who are receiving any sort of, not any sort of, but this counseling that you're referring to. HIV cases have doubled. There's over 200, and what is it, 260 reported cases of HIV? 40% of them are actually, I don't know what the word is, but proven to be real, not just these confrontations between peers or whatever, but 40% are actual harassment cases. And this is all post-pandemic. We know what the reason is, and it's been mentioned here. I didn't say this. That's why I'm happy that I came, because you all said it, that this has to do with the mental health crisis that's plaguing not just the township, not just the state, but the country. And I believe that I've offered, and I'll offer it again, and I think I have to change my wording because I never come answers. So, I'm now going to ask Mr. Padway a question. How can we advance the moment of silence idea, which is an aspect of mindfulness and mental health training, which is free? You don't have to hire, last year, it was Gaggle, I believe, was the name of the, you have to pay for them. You don't have to pay for, I don't know if that worked, because this year, there's a new partnership with, what is it called? Troy County Behavioral Care. Instead of doing all of these cost-inflated partnerships, I have an idea. I want to promote it if in the middle schools, and it was Anthony Wayne, if I'm not mistaken, then the middle schools were where most of this is happening. Now, I'm not, forget the high schools. I was actually speaking to parents, and I was telling them about this, my, this moment of silence, and the high school system. They looked at me and says, why wouldn't you start in the high schools? The high schools, those kids are, they're, they're already just thinking about college, their foot out the door, once they, once they're freshmen. Go to the middle schools. That's what they told me, and then I read this report yesterday that this is happening in the middle schools. I would like to know how we could advance a free program of a moment of silence, of mindfulness, call it what you want, that kids can think that they don't have the right to hit another person, to embarrass another person, for self-worth thinking, just, I'm another individual not in a jungle. We live in a civilized society. If I was in a jungle, I could do what I want to get ahead. The Nietzschean will to power is what prevails now in society. The will to meaning is what needs to be implemented in children. And if we can do it in the schools, why not? So, I want to know how we can implement that, and I volunteer. You don't have to hire anybody. It is a free program, and I know there are members of the board who are incredulous to this idea, but I'm not, and I don't think anyone should, because guess what? If not for me, my kids don't go to public schools. They don't. My kids go to private school. I'm doing it for the community, not for me. It does nothing for my children, but it does everything for everyone else's children. So, my question is, how can we get this implemented as a pilot? Try it in, where was it? It was Anthony Wayne? Try it in one middle school. Let's pilot it. How do we get that on the agenda? Thank you.
Hi, I'm Maria Franzo, Wayne, New Jersey. I also was concerned about all of the increases in the incidence of HIV over the last several months, and I know that there have been some programs. I've heard from my child, who is a high school student, a program that they attended about anti-bullying. And unfortunately, the feedback I got was that while the intent of the program was to point out what incidents of bullying or could be potentially HIV actually are, it wasn't really received, and it wasn't really received by the student body as, as relatable to them. So, I guess what I'm asking is that whatever program or solution is proposed to combat the increase in HIV incidence really be purposeful and done in a way that it speaks to the students so that whatever is implemented is successful. I, you know, I don't know what is being considered, but I do know that there have obviously been a dramatic increase in, in these incidents, and it's very concerning. But I think that whatever we do, it can't be what the parents think, it can't be what the board thinks, it can't be what the teachers think. It really has to speak to the kids, because that's where the issues are occurring, and that's what we need to make sure that we're being effective in rolling something out. So, I just ask that whatever we do implement, we're really doing it with that mindset. What are the kids going to hear, what they're going to receive, and what they're going to make the changes to, to reduce all of these incidents that we're seeing? So, thank you.
Anyone else with any questions?
Both of us.
Second. Any old business? New business?
Old business.
I want to thank Rabbi Girkov for attending once again and then bringing this up, so I would like to make the motion that the Education Committee invite Rabbi Girkov to discuss piloting the, the moment of silence.
That's an inappropriate motion. You can ask to recommend that, but that's not a motion. The committee meetings are not open to the board. In the committee meetings, you have to make a recommendation to the administration to do that. You can set up a meeting with Rabbi. That's not a problem. My suggestion would be that Dr. Toback, I need to Rabbi, and then take it from there within the next couple of weeks. And new business? Or comments?
I wanted to start off by talking about the Memorial Day Parade, which I have to say this year was epic turnout. It was fantastic. The weather couldn't have been more perfect. I was especially proud to be there as a board member to see our Wayne Valley marching band doing its thing with Mr. Baptiste, and we had two of the most amazing singers from Wayne Hills and Wayne Valley. Ms. Russinello, their portal director, came with them. Cheryl Lancelotti sang our anthem. I had chills. And Adriana Sercone sang God Bless America. It just, the level of talent in our district just never ceases to amaze me. But since we're on the topic of goals, I wanted to bring up a very, a very important topic. We talk about our kids and what harms them and what's important to us, and it's now a 100% fact that the single most cause of death for children in America now is gun violence. I've always wrung my hands over this topic, as much as it disturbs me every time I see it on the news or I, I hear about it. What can we do locally? Nothing. We're all waiting for the federal government to act or legislators up the poll to act, but I could never really come up with anything other than, you know, something educational to do locally. But there's always been sort of pushback on that. Well, what can we teach? What should we teach? Well, thankfully, the School Board Association had a safety task force. They compiled this huge report, and I decided to look it over, and they even provided a sample resolution about how we as a community can affect change in this area by educating our younger students especially about gun safety. This program could save lives, absolutely. Teaching about where firearms should be kept, what you should and shouldn't do if you see a gun in someone else's home. These are things that we could do here locally. We could partner with our law enforcement. This could be similar to the DARE program. We've always focused on drugs, but that's no longer the number one killer of children. Gun violence, number one. So, I'm not making any motions. I'm not a fan of blindsiding the board in the moment. This is something I'm going to forward to all the board members. Take your time, read it over. The resolution requires some changes. Eventually, I'd like to send it to the Safety Committee for discussion, but I think this is important, and this could be a board goal. That was my other point to make. The board can make goals. We haven't had board goals in quite a while. One that I've been floating around in my head is in-house professional development for our newer board members. We have a lot of really new board members, and if they wait for the three or four years to do their mandated training, they're just missing out on a lot of things. We could become a certified board. We could invite the New Jersey School Boards Association here to run classes for the full board to become a certified board. Again, a suggestion, not a motion. That's something for the president to decide if he wants to have a retreat, have further discussion, but in the meantime, I'm going to send this report to you, and I want to see if you feel as optimistic as I do that finally, think global, act local. We can actually save a life if we implement some of this education about guns for our students. This isn't taking away anyone's Second Amendment right. It's not asking anyone to hand over their guns, so I don't see why it would even be controversial. So, that's all I have. Expect an email.
Anyone else? Motion to close.
Second.
Thank you, Ruth.